Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM, Monday, September 28th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a question, please?
Wanted to open tonight with this passage out of the book of Philippians, Chapter 4. It says, "Rejoice in the Lord always; I will say it again, rejoice. Let your gentleness be evident to all. The Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation by prayer and petition with thanksgiving present your requests to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds in Christ Jesus." Let me pray. Jesus, we pray for what this passage promises us tonight. We pray for gentleness, for peace, we pray for understanding, and we pray that we would not be anxious about anything. I pray that you would give communication, unity, and just a spirit of service be upon everyone who is here tonight. And we thank you so much for everyone who's willing to meet on behalf of the citizens of this town, and we pray that everything they do would be profitable. We pray this in your holy name, amen.
Thank you. Okay, so, next item is approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2019, and September 16th, 2019. Everybody have a chance to review that? I'll take that as a yes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
First and a second, is there any discussion, corrections, questions? Go to vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. Minutes from September 9th and September 16th are approved. Do we have any changes for the agenda? I don't see any notated on here.
No changes.
Okay, so, can we get a...
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, sir. And you too, sir. Any questions? Vote.
Tal.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. The agenda is approved, as written. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest with anything that we're going to discuss Does anybody from the public have anything they want to bring up or discuss that is not on the agenda this evening?
Dave Olgaer, 205 Third Street East. We have...
Please limit to three minutes.
Yeah, we have nine kids in lift program for their grant. It should be nice if we could get the simulator out to the school so we can train on it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comment? So, at this time, we'll close our hearing and open the public hearing, is that correct?
Six forty-five.
Oh, it is, thank you. Six forty-five. So, that being the case, we're gonna move forward until that time. We'll go into Department head report.
I can start. Tracy E-Day for most of August and September, addressing many of the concerns and calls about the upcoming small cities grants. Actually, we are in the next phase of it that will be signed off, come from UCAP late last week, so I'll be having the mayor sign off on some of the things that need to be posted. So, we are getting very close to where we will start sending out applications and that type of thing. So, that's good news, and we've had a number of people that have called in on that, so that is good news. Just multiple trips to Orchard Lanes again. We got some leaks in the four of the roofs out there, just sporadically, that we're trying to find the issues for, and the EDA is working on that. I know that's been on here for a while, but keeping the ball moving on the Broad Acres project, really, honestly, we are gonna get the cement done here and before the snow flies. Lot of real estate, lot of Third Street projects that are going on. Working on 106 Third Street, it is now completely cleaned out on the inside, that is the old Asian market is what we've been calling it. That is completely cleaned out on the inside. The roof, I believe, is where it is not leaking now, and we had some progress on that late last week, and I don't know how much rain Tracy got over the weekend, but it is dry on the inside right now. In fact, going in through today, having the doors open, it actually smells better in there, amazingly enough, when you stop the rain from coming in. We are, over the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be given one, possibly two more $5,000 business awards, or the first half of it. The EDA is working on that, and we are still looking for one EDA member. We've got a few applicants right now, and then over the next couple of EDA meetings that we will be addressing those applications and choosing somebody that we'll bring to the city council. That's what I've got for you.
So, just to be clear, that roof has not been replaced?
It has not been replaced, yes. Yep.
Anybody got any questions for Jeff? Thank you. Tam, you wanna go?
So, August was another good month for us. 2018 sales were 55,570. In August of 2019, we had 68,242, and we had about $1,200 profit on the patio. July, and I just kind of actually, like, the first time, went through and looked at July's, like, what they did last year versus what we did a year later. And so, last, in 2018, July, they had a loss of $140, an inventory of 74,000. In July this year, we had a profit of 48,200, an inventory of 10318. And in August, they had a year-to-date profit of $766, an inventory of 70,682. And in 2019, we had a year-to-date of 46,073, with inventory of $103,336, which is like a $74,500 swing in July and a $77,900 swing in August. So, we're rocking it over there. Have a great team. We just hired another, a couple very part-time people to add to our team. Rosemary and I went to Tyler last week, and our dream team brought the fixtures home last week, so we saved a lot of money on getting our fixtures from Family Dollar for our new liquor store. In the packet or whatever, we have the POS system and the computer system that we'll have the council vote on later, or whenever we can do that. Thursday, we are, I am going to the MMBA regional meeting in Marshall, and then a couple employees and I are going to the breakthrough open house. And then, this October starts, the fire, or the fire department ended, the MMBA fundraiser ended the 11th of September, so we have some money to donate to the fire department. I'm thinking maybe we can have somebody do that, like, at the chili feed or something. And then, October starts the food drive. And last Monday, we donated a check for $200 to the animal shelter that we won from the MMBA, for the animal shelter in town. So, anybody have any questions or anything at all? You good? Thanks.
Thank you. Dale?
Actually, my report will be, my quarterly report will be completed on the 30th, so you'll get it at the next meeting. Before Chris left, we went to quarterly reports, so I can give you accurate numbers of hours of calls and trainings and stuff like that, so that'll be the 30th, that'll all get sent over to Diane.
All right, well, thank you. Shane?
Well, just a few things going on in town, as everyone can see. I guess first, I'll answer any questions you may have on my report that I included in the packet. Other than that, I do have, I guess I can go over a little bit of the street project, just so if people aren't getting the newsletter. There is a newsletter going around for these infrastructure improvement projects. It's usually done weekly. Get signed up through ISG. Contact them in their mailings, otherwise you can contact myself, and I will get you to the right person to get put on the mailings. But as many are aware, utilities have begun an intersection of Center Street and Hollit Street. They plan on working on three blocks of Hollit from Center to Fourth Street, and then, in a couple weeks, they plan on starting to kinda tie things together before winter. They wanna do one block of Emery Street, starting at Second up to Third Street. So, as you can see, I think all the tree removals have been completed for the project, the entire project that is for that. But that's kinda where that's at, just so everybody's on the same page there. They're starting the apron improvement project, possibly tomorrow, the way it's sounding so far at the airport, and then we got a boring contractor out on the EDA properties putting water main in for those projects. So, as of right now, they'll have water at the first building site for the EDA lots probably by the end of the week.
So, basically, the streets that are, that they ripped up the asphalt and everything out are the ones they're doing this fall?
Yep. And they are required to have it back to blacktop, if we just one layer of blacktop, because they'll have it back to blacktop before winter, so, and the concrete will also be in place.
They've already taken out that one block of Emery?
Yep.
And they have, yeah. They got another crew in for that block of Emery Street, so apparently that crew will be freed up in a couple of years, so. Two crews here doing similar activities, so.
Just a heads up, Shane, I got the email from Project Update, they didn't have a PDF file in today, so you couldn't open it.
Okay.
The one they sent me, so I don't know. Think you give them a jailhouse, have them double check it, so.
I think mine did, but I'll check on that.
Yep.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Shane on that? Wanna cover the library?
She just had sent her report in.
Yeah.
Jason's right now.
Well, for the benefit of the folks watching, I can paraphrase here. Basement is finally complete, and it looks amazing. They're excited to begin using the new space. They're in the process of buying tables and chairs and furniture, using the second grant they received, the $10,000, from the Carl and Verna Schmidt Foundation. They're gonna set an October meeting for a date for an open house. September will be, Antiques Appraiser Mark Moran will return to Tracy. There are still spots available. As she states here, she will not be at the meeting, so if anybody has any questions, please do not hesitate to contact her. In August, they had 1,065 checkouts, 325 renewals, and 56 digital checkouts for a total circulation of 1,446, and that's down from, that's down 342 from last year. So, if anybody has any other questions, you can please contact Val.
Six forty-five.
Yep. So, at this time, we will open the public hearing regarding unique auto sales on Craig Avenue. Does anybody have any, anything they'd like to share on that? That was a quick public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, hearing none. We have a report from the police department. Again, we'll paraphrase, Boxcar Days was average year for activity. This month, we'll again start to be present in the schools, and Officer Markard will be starting the Truth About Drugs program. Things are starting to get back to normal with staff numbers being what they should be. The new officers are working hard at learning their job duties and meeting the community. Excuse my absence, conflicting appointment in Sioux Falls. So, I don't think we have time to really paraphrase all the incident reports, but the council has reviewed that. Is there anything else? Move on to petitions, requests, and communications. Set the 2020 levy and truth in taxation date December 9th, 2019.
What, the vote on the public hearing yet?
What's that?
Set the vote on the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Got some questions, if you could help me out. Is the, I'm confused, reading the paperwork. They received $40,000 for a conditional use permit?
No.
That's what's written on his paperwork, that's what's confused me.
No, that was, no, it was...
The man who paid for the property?
The mountain date paid 40 grand.
60?
Yeah.
It'd have been 60.
The other question is, can we even grant a conditional use permit for someone who doesn't own the, does he own the land?
Contracted, I believe.
Yeah. Okay, so, and the map that he was supposed to provide, so we know where it's at, where it's at?
Is it the spot, there's nothing in the packet, but is it the spot just right behind? The lot between the floral shop and the Streets Service Center.
That grass lot?
Yeah.
And then, what is the, what are they gonna do to make that comply with the ordinance?
Yeah, they'll have to have a, there's no, currently no bathrooms in the facility right now, so you'd have to run sewer and water through the building, and then they'll have to have some sort of a dust free material on the, for the parking yet. He is aware of that.
So, he owns from the highway all the way to...
Yeah, I can only pull a map up.
You tell me it's all the way back, I mean, because there's those bushes, like, part way, but he owns, you're talking about the building behind that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not, I'm not in any way opposed to granting a conditional use permit, but I don't know if we should grant a conditional use permit, if the property isn't up to what the conditional uses requirements are.
As long as they meet the requirements, I know the league says the city usually has no legal basis for denying capital or a conditional use permit.
Right.
But as long as they've met all the requirements of the ordinance, that being said, they still have, I don't know if it's something that you'd have to through, you know, contingent on, you know, bringing everything on the lot up to ordinance.
If we could do it that way, I'd be fine with that, but it's, I mean, to approve it without having the other conditions met isn't really a good precedence to set.
Yeah, it would have to be conditional on...
So, it's conditional use upon conditions?
Upon the conditions, to use it for the conditional use.
But they comply with code and...
Yep.
Yep.
I don't know if it'd be better to table until that time that it's completed, or to, I don't know if you can, you can't approve a conditional use with conditions, so, you know, you're catch-22.
Yeah, and he's just, I think he's on the standpoint, he doesn't wanna do the work if he can't get a conditional use, but, you know, if it's contingent, I guess I wanna see.
Well, and I can understand that, because there's some significant changes he's gonna have to make, so, if I was in his position, I would wanna know that...
Yeah, I don't...
You know, before I put all that into it, I would wanna know that, you know...
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to do it, but it's like, are we putting the eggs and chicken or egg theory first? It's like...
The baskets mixed up there.
One's gotta be done before the other can be done, but if we can approve it with the conditions that that's all done before it's actually...
Utilized for the purpose.
Right.
Right, and I think that makes sense, I mean, that...
If that's permissible, I got to...
Yeah, we don't have, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that, is there?
I think we could do a contingent on bringing up the lot up to standards. So, based on that, we're fine, we'd be fine doing that.
So, we could grant the conditional use permit contingent upon...
Bringing the lot up to city...
The city code that's needed for that use.
Yep.
And then, it can't be used for that use until it's...
Until...
Until they do that.
Right. So, I would make that motion for that, that we grant the conditional use permit based that everything's brought up to city code to use it for that, and it can't be used until that.
And all legal fees are paid.
And all legal, whatever, whatever all needs to be...
Public hearing notifications and all that other stuff, so.
I'll second that motion.
First and a second, is there any other questions or discussion?
Under discussion, what is gonna be the acceptable improvement for the dust mitigation? I mean, blacktop or concrete or anything else would still be...
Crushed concrete is what he talked about.
Could we address that plant from planning and zoning?
Sure.
We brought it forward because he made the statement that he would work with Shane and do whatever the city said needed to be done. I believe it was crushed concrete, it was a dust-free, is what it calls for, is that right, Shane? And that he would comply with all of those and stay in compliance to keep his conditional use. That was why it was brought forward and recommended by the planning and zoning board to get to this far, and we scheduled the hearing.
Does that answer your question?
And we talked about setbacks.
Crushed concrete is a dust-free covering?
Code it with something.
That's what I mean, it's, it's a...
You'd have to maintain that to keep it...
Right.
Right.
Because I can't, we can't really specify it, if it just says dust-free.
Right.
I guess he could have gravel and coat it with soapy oil every year, too.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted, so we know what we're looking for, and...
The ordinance said batuminas, then, you know, they'd be required to put batuminas...
Right.
If you wanna go down that path.
That was my only question, so long as we're all understood as to what I meant, and I do, and the way I understand it, the operation can't take place to all those conditions are met, correct?
Yeah.
Anybody else? We go to vote?
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Special use permit for unique auto sales at 384 Craig Avenue, contingent with the specified improvements and compliance with city code passes. Now, we can move to the 2020 levy, truth in taxation.
So, we need to set a, a lead truth in taxation date. In the past, it's been the first meeting in December, or it's the only meeting in December, actually. So, we just need to set that date, this agenda item?
Levy.
And then, would that just be the resolution, or?
No.
Then we have the levy resolution as part of that under 2019-63, proposed budget and tax levy for 2020.
On that, Shane, did we get the public works full-time add to that?
That's computed in here.
Okay, well, what is the projected increase?
I thought they had included that, but it was just a dollar amount.
Okay, so it didn't change from the last meeting?
No.
Okay. I think so, then, make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-63, adopting the proposed budget, and setting the truth in taxation meeting for December 9th at 6:45?
A second.
A first and a second. Any discussion? I have an item under discussion. I was reviewing what we talked about at the last meeting, and I really think we need to increase the training budget back up, or, you know, we need, I think that we owe it to the people that we represent to be as smart as we can, and on best practices, and what we should be doing up here. And I feel that we need to, we need training, given the events of the last few months. And I feel that we need to, we need training, given the events of the last few months. And I would much rather have that money available and usable than not.
I guess I don't disagree that we need training, I think we can get a lot of the training through the League of Minnesota Cities and everything, I mean, $500 of a person, I still think is. Is adequate amount for a year each time. I mean, we're not saying this is for our whole term, I'm gonna have $500, it's, you know, for the year. But I just think we need to be judicial here with, what we're also expecting the taxpayers to pay. I mean, like, the one training that's being held in Sleepy, I mean, that was $55. You know, a lot of the stuff like that is not real expensive and, you know, there's other ones through the webinars and stuff on the computer that. A lot of it's gonna be mostly mileage.
And if you use the city cars, no mileage.
Well, I, you know, I just wanted to put that out there, if you all feel that the 500 is adequate, I mean, that's.
I say that shoot for 500 this year and let's see how it goes. And if we eat crow because we're going to either not get the training or we're going to be going over budget, then we definitely look at it for the next year's.
Definitely gonna have to increase it the next year with the council size increase and it's gonna be, those initial training classes are two nights at a hotel, mileage and 280 bucks for the deal, so $500 ahead will wipe that out at that time, so what you don't spend this year, you could apply to next.
Which would be even more reason to have that money available this year. So what we don't spend could be applied to next year with the increase in the council.
I guess I'm not used to where a budget that you carry it over like that, you have to re-budget every year, so.
You have to re-budget every year.
It's not a carryover thing.
No, but it's, no, I don't want to get into an argument about it, it's available money that you didn't spend. So, you know, the specifics of exactly how that would get back in there is.
You just re-budget for it.
Yeah, and so I I just really feel that we need to have that. And I think there's a lot of folks in town that would agree with that.
Are they aware of the types of training that is available for free or minimal cost? I want to bend beforehand, I want to know in a class with $55 or free.
Well, I agree, we are tasked to be responsible with this stuff, I'm not saying that at all, we, that's what we do, we should be doing anyway. My point is that to have that money available as opposed to not, if there's a training that would be valuable to us and to the city, I would rather have the funds available to attend that than not. And if it doesn't get spent, you can re-budget into next year with the increase in the council, which will certainly be needed then.
Not the budget for the council size increase too, if the wages do.
Could bend to three different sessions since the initial session. The last one was pretty much a repeat of the first one. And the other two, they break into smaller groups and you concentrate on a certain item and you're supposed to take that information back to your city. And I think the ones that are worthwhile are the budgeting ones and the do's and don'ts, you know, as far as the fiscal responsibility. But they, I have, I've been watching for them, I haven't seen any since then, and the last one I went to on that was probably about 10 years ago. So some of the information that they have and the training that they have isn't really applicable to what we do where we're at. But I, it's always been encouraged to look at the schedule that the league puts out. You get emails from it, there's something that somebody wants to go to, bring it to the, you bring it to the attention of the council administrator and you get set up and go.
I believe we can.
The way I was tasked with it is you go, get trained, you bring that information back and explain it to the rest of the council instead of having everybody sitting there, you just have one, and I believe that's the way the fire department's been doing a lot of their training also.
Yeah, I believe you can request certain trainings as well, but I, you know, I didn't intend to get into the minutia of it, I just wanted to throw that out there and see what you thought, you know, that's. And what I'm hearing is we're not getting a lot of support here, so.
I just see as we jumped up to $2,500, that I think we are showing that we want to do some education and training, but I think $2,500 is a point to start at.
Okay, well, with that, we have a motion on the floor and a second. We'll go to vote, please.
Tell.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Schoens.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. Resolution 2019-63 adopting the proposed budget and tax levy for 2020 is approved with a date set of 9 December for the levy and truth and taxation date. Grant agreement, SPA 4204-25.
So this is actually for the April grant for the FAA. They need a, like a formality grant agreement approval from the council and a resolution approving that.
I would make a motion to approve resolution 2019-62 and for the airport improvement. It is a federal matching, basically federally funded grant, they're gonna get 90%, state will do five and we do 5%.
Second that. Any questions or discussion? Vote.
Schoens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Tell.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Demers.
Aye. Resolution 2019-62, state grant resolution, SPA 4204-25. Passes. And the agreement also. Approving a full-time part, a full-time public works employee versus two part-time.
This is a discussion brought up at the budget meeting. Means we had a low amount of applicants with part-time. Discussion was to bring to this meeting a request for full-time public works employee. That was requested, I think, a couple months ago. Just, didn't feel the council at all. Adding that position.
This is because we're having a hard time filling the part-time? So is this, this is in the hope that it's easier to draw a full-timer than two part-timers?
Yep.
If we got a job description in mind.
I'll tell you, it's gonna be probably half to three-quarter time of being in public works. Fixing streets, trimming trees, that's our biggest need is right now. Operators with ability to have a CDL and operate the bigger equipment.
Snow removal is part of that as well, isn't it?
Yep.
I'd make a motion to start advertising for a full-time public works employee.
Second.
First and second, any discussion, questions? Go ahead and go to vote.
Teigs.
Aye.
Tell. Peterson.
Aye.
Schoens.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. One full-time employee, you can, that's approved, try and get that. Boy, I'm just. Damn. Rosemary Martin, Planning Commission Chair, rezoning downtown building.
This came to the council once before. Any city code that contains any ordinance is a living, working document, as long as the city continues to breathe, changes will be needed to adopt to the time, so things will change as long as the city is still moving forward, so. Changes will happen. We no longer have ordinances that pertain, because I went back and looked, we had ordinances that pertain to our houses and livery stables and we don't need those anymore. But we do need to clean up the language in the present ordinance 3.10, and I only saw two things in there at this time that applies, which we'd be to remove. B32, which is the outdoor phone booths, because we don't need them anymore. Obviously Superman doesn't come to Tracy. The suggestion is to add daycare preschool as the permitted use, and there's no way to figure out what other one we can put in there at this time because nobody else has presented to move into a building, so we can't second guess that. This is what we recommended, and it was the consensus of the commission that adding the language to include daycare slash preschool was an omission and not an intent to prevent this type of business. This type of business was operated approximately 200 feet to the west of the location proposed for 45-plus years. The only problem was it was in a different time zone. A daycare preschool would also fulfill the language of being a business that is mutually compatible and can benefit from the, and contribute to a compact shopping area and strengthen the city and the region. I'm asking that you go forward and schedule the next, the hearing for this ordinance change at the next council meeting on the 14th. That was what we had already discussed at the planning and zoning, you kicked it back to us and I looked through it, there's, you know, there's no way to second guess that. And we need to move forward with this, so I'm just asking that the public hearing go forward.
Is there, Rosemary, is there anything in there?
I'd have to pull it up on my phone, but go ahead.
That you, that you recalled or have you discussed about any e-commerce business in the downtown business district being allowed?
We already have one of those.
If.
We already have two of those, actually.
Well, I know, and that's, I'm just, I want to make sure that they're included and are not eliminated, so if you have an e-commerce business where they're not open to the public, they don't have a storefront, you know, I don't want them being.
Both of them that we have.
Being hammered for being a storage place or something like that, so would you look at that, see how you could get that put in there?
Okay, we do meet on the 7th, I mean, yes, we meet on the 7th or the 8th.
Just getting the right.
Is that, is that?
Just to get the right language, so five years from now, I've got four buildings downtown that run e-commerce, they're.
But as long as there a storefront, is that, is that not included in that?
Not necessarily be a storefront, that's what I'm saying. You'd have to, you'd want to get it set so that there's no accusations about it being a storage area because of what they're doing or how they're doing it. I would, Mark is great on that, I would ask Mark to have him.
He's on the planning and zoning.
Have him come up with something that, based on his experience and what language be necessary, make sure that's in there. So if somebody comes in here six months from now and wants to buy a building and just running strictly e-commerce in it without a storefront that's open all the time, that they can't.
Can we do that, that's the question.
Well, that's.
Know what that, but.
That's what your living document is gonna be, you need to make a.
Okay, because I have a.
You gotta tie it in somehow so it doesn't wind up as a storage place.
As long as they can show active.
Right, how are, you're gonna have to have posted hours and that kind of thing?
At least a business license or, you know, whatever, that's why it's top to Mark, but if we're gonna go change this.
Right.
Let's get all our changes in there that we can.
Okay, can we still schedule the hearing for the 14th with that information in there being that we're voting on the 8th? Because there is also, there's, the time is of the essence here. As there is a preschool that wants to move into a building downtown and get started. That's the question.
Matt would make the changes to the ordinance and draft the resolution that you would have to approve at the same time, so you would be able to look at that ordinance. Prior to it being approved.
I, I see no problem with that either, I just.
Okay.
We need to quit being so focused on one item when we're gonna go into changing an ordinance, we need to, or think outside the box and think what could be coming in there. It's, because it's expensive, it's drawn out.
I understand that, I understand that.
The more we can do it one time, the better off we are.
Okay.
And we can always reject something.
Right, you can take it out.
Right.
I think it's easier to take it out than it is.
It is.
So.
Still, if you're taking it out, before you adopt the ordinance, because once the ordinance is in place, you still have to go through all the same.
So we have to have 10 days to publish when?
You have to have the public hearing published, is that gonna work out?
Right.
Okay. That we're having the public hearing and we'll have all that information in there, then I can go to, I suppose, the metro area and look at what they have for e-commerce in there. I'm not into reinvent, I don't reinvent the wheel, I see what other people have.
See if Mark's got some knowledge.
Get Mark's suggestions, he's gonna, he's got the business model, he's gonna know what they need and what they don't need and he understands what would fit downtown and what wouldn't, I mean.
We just need some kind of overall idea of what that type of business would look like so that, moving forward.
And if he doesn't think it's a good idea, then leave it out.
Right, see the thing is, we have to have, and we have to figure also in there how that goes with posted hours on buildings and that kind of thing, because now to be able to have it, you have to have a storefront to be able to have any kind of, anything in any buildings downtown, you have to have posted hours.
Well, and if we make this change, or, and that's part of what we're investigating here and looking at, because if you're e-commerce, you're 24/7. I mean, there's no hours to post.
We have to talk about it. You can do e-commerce at any place, though, people are doing e-commerce out of their homes.
Right, but if you want a building downtown, there's different rules.
That's the question, if we're gonna allow it downtown.
Right.
Well, add that in there, if we can move to the hearing on the 14th, that would be great.
Yeah, see if we can see. I'd like to see what the definition, the legal definition of e-commerce businesses is.
Couple other places for it too.
Okay.
And we're fine, we should be fine for time.
All right, very good.
Just gonna bring to the attention, the ordinance has to be published once it's approved and that doesn't take effect until 30 days after the publication.
Right.
Right, which is why Rosemary is suggesting that we move on this. Which, you know, we want to help out as much as we can, we don't get tied up in red tape and, you know, so.
So you need a motion then for a public hearing on October 14th.
To review.
We do ordinance changes.
Yeah.
Downtown business district zoning.
Second.
6:45.
First and a second. Questions or discussion? Go to vote.
Tell.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Schoens.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye. So the motion to take a look at these changes at the next meeting, where the public hearing at 6:45 on October 14th passes. Liquor store point of sale estimate.
So, we have been talking about a new POS system for quite a while, so I put it in the packet. There was our suggester, suggested to us that we get it in sooner than later, before we move, so that it has a chance to, the employees have a chance to be, you know, comfortable with it and that kind of thing. Not to mention the fact that our new computer system now kicks me out every other invoice when I'm processing, so can't wait for the new system to come in. But I think you guys have it all in the packet, right, I sent it in the, so that's what his estimate is, is about $8,057.42.
Were you able to find out how long?
Oh, you know what, I never got a hold of him. How long it'll take him to install it, when?
That one license, then?
Two license.
It's two license.
Yeah. I mean, it's two computers, well, three, because it'll be the front, two cash registers and then in the back office.
Be three license?
Three license.
And what about, um, system updates and that kind of stuff?
That's all included in the...
Pardon?
I mean, they'll be pre, so the first year, we have like, included in this estimate is for a block of time for consulting and that kind of thing. And when, and when they do come down and put the new system in, I believe these are like, we have like, two days or something of training that's included in the, in the bid.
Okay.
And then there are updates, I don't remember how much you said they were, but that'll be a couple of years from now.
And what's their support? Their support?
They have an annual support agreement.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the bid.
That's part of the bid, okay, so if you have an issue, you can just call them up and...
Yeah, this is, and like, in investigating between this one and a couple of other companies, this is the one that most of the liquor store, or a lot of the liquor stores have and are happy with, so...
So, there's extra support?
Yeah, so like they said, you know, it's like many of the people on MMBA, too, it's like, if you have a question, you can always call any one of them, too, and they can help out instead of...
And it's compatible with Vannion?
I'm just, I'm curious, not trying to flog the horse here, but, so if you have an issue, do they come onsite, is that part of the...
On the phone, or he can come onsite? He's actually come up here and helped us with the system we have now.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, is there an extra charge for them to come onsite, is there a, like a 24-hour?
Well, in our first year, I mean, that's, we have a block of, in our first year, that's covered.
Okay.
And then after that, they do like, they can do like service contracts, like so many hours.
Do we have any idea what, what those are running right now?
Um, you know, I don't have that information with, I can't remember what it was, but it was cheaper than the other companies that we were, that we, um...
Don't you make it, ma'am.
And this, and this system, just from being different liquor stores, this is a very stable system.
Okay.
But there haven't been a lot of issues anywhere.
And I think even in saying that, somebody else like asked for certain things and then he comes up with...
Right.
With the program to get, with the reports and stuff that they need, so...
It's one like if Wyndham, let's say, asks for something specific because they use this system, his next release, you put it out to everybody, that all of a sudden you can run this report to get this and this for...
Yeah, and that was going to be my next question, is, you know, how customizable is that to tailor it to your specific needs?
There's a ton of reports.
A bunch of reports, yeah. He's got better, yeah, in investigating the other companies, his reports are better for what we need versus some of the other ones.
You can do pretty much everything you want with what he's got out there.
All right, very good.
Aren't we taxed on this?
I don't think we are for liquor stores, because they're, because they're offered, we can't be ahead of the private sector on it, so it's not one of the exemptions on it.
I'd make the motion to approve the purchase.
I'll second it.
First and second, any questions or discussion? Move to vote?
Peterson.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Schoens.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Mayor Demers.
Aye.
You know what, I have that information for you. Tax support, as if you go, as you pay as you go at 75 an hour, you can do a $750 block of time, which is 12 and a half hours, and if, or block of time is 12 and a half hours, and if you don't use it for $750, you can roll it over to the next year. Or unlimited is $875, any tax support you need, any time of the day, it's 875 a year for after the first year.
After the first...
Sorry, I didn't realize I had that down there, yeah.
Okay, great, and that's, yeah, exactly what I was looking for.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, so the motion passes for the purchase of the new point of sale system for the liquor store. So, I know it's kind of late, but we are budgeted for that, are we not?
It was already in the 2019's budget, they told me, it's not the 2010's.
We, we approved the liquor store move budget?
Right, yep, so it's in that.
This was, this was just more or less come along just so we had the information that everybody knew what was going on.
Okay.
Make sure that it tied into Vannion and everything.
Potential loan grant for blight property located at 236 Third Street, the old Super Value Building.
I'll start this off, this past summer, it came to the forefront with 236 Third Street being a blighted property. And the blighted property came to the forefront because we had people come in complaining about it and then actually a business that are, that's going along with it. Going along with it.
Three points.
And, and it wasn't that, the city wasn't working on it, because the city was working on it, but with a blighted property like that and what needs to be done through the tax system, through the government system, it takes forever, as we know with the old Anderson building that we're dealing with right now. Well, this one came to the forefront because we had to get it taken care of, the city council had talked about it that night, about why it needs to be pushed to the forward and we need to be moving on it a lot faster. So, I was asked, or we were asked, to get on it and try to find a situation, well, the situation actually came to us with the fact that we, with the, somebody came to us with a plan to buy it and clean it out, with the possibility of some city help, so instead of the city going into it alone and putting a lot of money into either tearing it down or putting a new roof on it and fixing it up, which we've got some estimates on all those things, I'll just give you that number right now, just to clean it out and to put a new roof on it and to get rid of everything that's on top of that building for, from the past 50 years, we're looking at right around $72,000. And that's without doing anything on the inside to get it ready to be used. So, we really don't want that to be in the EDA's hands, but the EDA's been asked to help. Things that have been done also with it, the EDA board asked me to go to the League of Minnesota Cities and see what the EDA can do with their money. So, I went to them and they said, as long as it's for economic growth and as long as it's fair, we can go along, we can do something like that. They asked me to go to our city attorney, he gave me the same information, the city attorney said, as long as it goes after economic growth and it takes care of blighted property, we can do something like that with the possibility of a forgivable loan. We've got a situation right now where with that $72,000, we have someone that would like to put $22,000 of their own money into it, then borrow $50,000 of it, and as soon as the first $25,000 of that is paid, then the other $25,000 would be forgivable. Now, we're thinking about $25,000, but in my opinion, right now, the new taxes or the new assessment that's going to go on it wouldn't have got paid, so the city, I believe, would have been stuck with that amount also, whereas now the taxes will be paid with this. So, you can say we're, the EDA is probably going to put $25,000 of their money, going to be going into saving a building downtown and getting it ready for the possibility of someone moving into it. It wasn't absolutely necessary, according to our attorney, that I bring it to you, because it is towards economic development, but we thought with a, a project this large and it being, I guess you could say, at the forefront of, of the, the city, because of the, the letters that were written, that type of thing, we wanted to bring it to you also. And, and, you know, and get, get what we're trying to do passed through you also. Dale, you got a couple of things you want to add to that?
Again, if you want me to.
Yes, I do, I would like Dale Johnson to add a couple of things to that.
I don't have much, much more to add, other than paraphrase what Jeff said, I said in the council meeting here, where it got brought to the council's attention, I believe that Dennis and Nicole were here and spoke, and we're concerned about it and the council wanted action to happen. Happened to be in an EDA meeting where they discussed the fact that something needed to be done and, you know, the building ultimately, I believe everybody at this table and the EDA table originally thought, we just need to tear the building down. We were able to gain access to the, to the building, Shane and I walked through the building structurally, the building seemed sound, just needs a little TLC on the inside and obviously on the roof. At that time, discussion was had with a few different individuals about what could be done, potentially done with that building in the future, which there led us to the, the thought process. You know, instead of the taxpayers spending $60,000, tearing it down and making another gravel parking lot in downtown Tracy, if we could find the right person or people or group of individuals to purchase the building, get the building secured quicker than going through the process, the legal process of getting it, and then get the roof repaired, get the inside, the TLC done to the inside, get it cleaned up nice, and then determine what, which one of the multiple potential businesses we could put in there would be. With that, obviously, $72,000 with all the cleaning and sanitizing and everything, with that, it was thought, you know, we entertained as a, as a city using taxpayer money to potentially buy it and tear it down, if we could do kind of like the programs that we do in the housing where it's a third, a third, a third. You know, Jeff comments, the $22,000 down, the $25,000, $22,000 down is, that's 71 or $2,000, is not going to have that building ready. That's, that's just going to clean the building out and get a roof on it, and honestly, there's so many things on that roof that have to be redone, it's probably on the low end. Electrical upgrades on the inside, there's going to have to be some sort of air handling system, HVAC system that goes in there, because once you sanitize the building, you're going to want to keep airflow through the building so that you don't end up with that musty, mildy, mildy smell in the building, so there is more dollars than, than that 72,000 going into it. So, I guess at the, at the end of the day, it's kind of a matter of, you know, the building is back for sale, could be given, put up back for sale to the city right now, the building is secured in a private corporation's name, and actually demolition, or not demolition, removal of everything in the building was scheduled for last Friday, Friday and Saturday, and due to a little hiccup somewhere in the day on Friday, it got put on hold. So, it comes down to, I mean, does the council want the EDA to buy the building back and clean it out and fix it themselves, or do they want to let someone else do it, keep it in the public, allow it, keep it on the tax rolls and potentially help out what could have been a $60,000 liability to the city to make a parking lot to let it stand?
In the EDA meeting, there was a few, after listening to it today and getting the minutes done, there was actually a few ideas of, of, or plans, possible plans to put into that building. Nothing really to go public with yet, but there is some plans out there that, you know, the, the main thing, the main plan is to get it cleaned out, so we can have some, the neighbors of that building not complaining.
It's really hard for me to show the building to somebody and get them to dream about it when the roof's dripping in multiple locations, and there's some items in there that need to be cleaned out. It'd be a lot easier to try to get somebody excited about moving into Tracy and moving into that building if the building was empty.
I have through the EDA, I have a, what I'm going to call a, a motion, and it was a second and then approval, but they wanted it to go through the E, or the city council, which I agreed with completely. Even when I went to Matt with this, he says yes, with a, with something this side, it should go through the city council. I have a mortgage here, where if anything goes wrong with the payments, the building would be ours, so then if it's cleaned out and new roof on it, we've got a good standing building, plus also a promissory note with a date on it that it would be cleaned out of January 31st of 2020. So, that would, that's only, that's only four months, four months away. Four months away.
Honestly, we won't get to that point, I, for it to take that long, but...
Does that include the roof, then, too?
Providing we can get the building cleaned out and we can get the roof done this winter, yes. The roof will be patched, the two major leaks will be patched immediately, unless we're going into the full roofing process, there, just as a matter of, it's going to take a contractor and three different subcontractors up on the roof to remove a bunch of the old stuff from the grocery store, to eliminate a bunch of penetrations through the roof, so that we can put the new roof on, there's absolutely no reason to leave. For those of you who've ever drove through there, I mean, I believe at one time, they, they called it a penthouse that they had up in the back there, and there is air compressors and there's probably a hundred dollars worth of scrap metal and conduit, and scrap metal's not worth anything right now, so, I mean, there, there's a lot of work of, of cleaning off just on top of the roof before the new roof can go on.
I don't think there's any appetite within the city, the EDA board or the city council to, to tear down another building, we know the, the issues in the, the public, I mean, I was gone at the time, but, I mean, actually had heard it with the Masonic Temple being taken down, we know that, and the Anderson building's going to be needing to take it down, so the EDA is already, you know, with the 106 Third Street, we've already done our share to, to take care of that one. I, I feel that we, just from my opinion, we need to step up and take care of this one also. So, it isn't torn down, so we don't have another, I don't know who used the analogy of missing tooth with another building gone downtown. It also would run into the problem where we already looked at another building here in town with the adjoining wall, you're, you don't know whether you're going to get it taken care of very well, just for the fact that the contractor might not want to tear down a building, because if the adjoining wall is there, is there too much risk on their behalf that they're going to do damage to the other wall, which they would be responsible for? So, that is a worry of mine also, not that it can't be done.
You know, the 106 Third Street, Jeff, you're going to have 35, 40,000 into it by the time it's just cleaned out and has the roof on it, so the city will have 35, 40,000 stuck in there.
In the building that's...
So, here you have 25,000 stuck into it, and the roof goes on at the building's all cleared, cleared out on the inside. I highly doubt that the EDA would ever end up with the building back, but worst case scenario, if that ever happened, you're talking five times bigger building? For less money?
Any questions from the city council?
So, it's 22,000 from the buyer, 25 for a paybackable loan, and then the other 25's forgiven when that 25,000 is...
Paid off.
Paid off.
And obviously no time restriction on when the 25,000's paid off, because potentially, as soon as the building is cleared out, it could be turned around and sold to one of the new, one of the three businesses, potential, serious potential businesses that could go in there.
We would have a first on it, I mean, initially, but if that first 25 gets taken care of, then it's out of our hands completely.
We're donating 25K to cleaning it up.
You're investing 25,000 to keep a building standing in downtown Tracy versus 70,000 to do it yourself or 60,000 to tear it down?
I'll make the motion, because I think we need to show that we are a forward thinking council and that we want to save our downtown and be proactive in getting businesses here, so I'll make the motion that we enter into the loan grant agreement, or that EDA does, I don't know, what do you want me to?
Forgivable loan, the EDA grant slash...
Forgivable loan, the EDA grant slash loan forgivable loan program?
Forgivable loan program for the property located at 236 Third Street.
And Matt said we don't even have to create a, any kind of program. It can just be a loan and we can put the, you know, the definitions into the loan itself. And all of this, everything has gone through and been okayed by our attorney.
I'd second it. First and second, is there any other questions or discussion? We go to vote?
Shones?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Motion to authorize EDA to grant that loan grant passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to go into a closed meeting at the end of the open portion to discuss the union negotiations.
First and second, discussion or questions? Vote?
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
We will go into closed meeting at the end of this meeting. Phase 3A2 sidewalk adjustment discussion.
Yeah, it is. I turned it on before.
So in your packets, there's a map. There currently isn't sidewalk. You can see where Donner's is here, and then Beers is actually the Culligan Building. So from Donner's all the way to the end of the, heading west to Emery and 7th, there's no sidewalk. So the proposal is in green. Excuse my crude drawing with the mouse, but. It kind of has to cross that way due to having a crosswalk right next to State Highway. It's a little risky, so it could be easiest to head south, be southwest with it. And then back to the northwest and then reattach right where the new liquor store location, right on that south property line is where it continues again. And I kind of have a picture. So if you were to continue that on, you know, there really isn't much for obstructions in the way. May have one tree removal. And then that's where it would cross. And then it would head over, it kind of lands right north of that driveway approach. So there'd be a sidewalk crossing there, too. So just wondering what your thoughts on doing that would be? I guess the other option is to completely remove the sidewalk on 7th Street and the section here that's in there already altogether. Just because it doesn't continue.
I think it makes sense with the new liquor store being out there to have it at least continued on, up on the side of the, by the liquor store. The rest of it's not going to hurt a darn thing.
Any idea when? I know this is a loaded question. That portion of Amber Street, is it going to be for construction cycle?
Probably next year or the year after. It would be in phase 3A-2 portion, so.
Is that when you're proposing to do this?
Or do you want to?
I'd say if that's part of that, I think, I think that's what we need to do. We just make it part of that.
Yeah, and that's when they do it, for the planning purposes. They asked the question, I felt the council should be involved with the decision.
I'd make a motion to route the sidewalk on the next section of, or the next street program, 3A-2, as drawn from you there.
I'd second that. First and a second, so where does the current sidewalk end?
Where the green line isn't. So you can see this truck parked here.
Right.
I don't know if you can see my mouse pointer or not.
Yep.
And then if you go, there's that same truck. So it's just before there. So that sidewalk you see at the end of it, that small private sidewalk that attaches to the end of the public sidewalk.
Yep.
That's actually the front of Donner's house. And then where their truck is, is their garage for that house. And then it's Culligan right after that. So if you look back here, you can kind of see, that green line may have gone past a little bit, but.
Basically at the edge of the slide there.
So it'd be right.
Yep.
Right here is where it ends.
Right there, if you walk up to the front door.
Oh, there it is.
Yep, right there. And with the liquor store out there, too, it's, we're going to want sidewalk there. And 7th Street comes down to where? Right where it starts, the green line.
Yeah.
That's where it ends, right there?
Yeah. You see this white pipe out here? That's a cleanup, that's about where it ends. There's the ending right here. So it's pretty much on that south lot line of the liquor store location. As you can tell, the street.
All right, we have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Let's go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Phase 3 sidewalk adjustment, phase 3A2 sidewalk adjustment is approved. All right, legal issues, EDA board chairman, alleged misconduct, and set hearing.
This is a complaint that was given. To look into the alleged misconduct to the council, whether the.
To set the record straight, yes, I did type up the complaint, but the EDA board made the recommendation to go into the investigation. There's a vice chair of the EDA board stated emphatically that they didn't need to go through the same process that Jeff Solomon went through. Otherwise, it would have ended there at that table that day. But when the board said, that's when I signed it and handed it over to Chris. So I want the record to reflect that. This isn't me going after somebody.
Well, that being said, I appreciate you clarifying that, Tony, because I think that needs to be clarified that it's not you personally. Looking through the multiple documents of this investigation, similar to the other ones, the one thing that is strikingly different to me is the legal opinion of our lawyer is that he felt that the allegations were not substantiated. So I guess when I sit there and I read through all the evidence and everything, I guess I, this is not to say if we're, we're just saying to set the hearing. This is not the actual hearing, so I'm not going to get into a lot of the evidence. If people want to see it, it's on the website. I mean, they can go on and read it. But I'm going to make a motion, we do not set a hearing date because I do not feel a hearing is necessary.
Look, I'll wait and see if somebody seconds it because I want to undiscuss on that. I've got some questions.
I'll second it.
Under discussion.
Yep.
This is the third time a package has been developed. This is the first time where the city's attorney, by his appearance in this, has made a decision without the council making it. It is in his opinion that none of this rises to the level. And what you're missing, and blatantly missing, is the code of conduct violation, or conflict interest violation that was admitted to at another EDA meeting after the fact. It's just similar to Jeff admitting that he met with Tom and Dave and he was hammered down for serial meetings because he was honest with him. And voted off the EDA. Same thing happened here, admitted to having a conflict interest after the fact. And you're giving him a pass.
No, I guess I don't feel like I'm giving him a pass. I can't remember which exhibit or whatever stated that, or if it was.
It would have been in the minutes that they encouraged you to read.
I was going to say if it was the meeting minutes, I did read the minutes. And where one of them, that he, he did make a statement that he didn't realize the, I can't remember if it was the extent or whatever of his conflict and everything. And I truly think he was convinced by other people that he had that conflict of interest. Because he does not have monetary conflict of interest with this.
Look on the legal definition, it doesn't have to be personal gain. It could be family members financial.
And Matt even addressed that.
That's what I mean, this is more, his opinion comes across more as a preconceived defense before a hearing and before any of the discussion could take place. And I. Mr. Solomon read this today, before he went to a funeral, he looked it up online. And his intent is to get ahold of his attorney and file suit against the city's attorney because of this. So we're back in the middle, back in the middle of lawyers this and lawyers that.
And that's what we have to stop. I'm tired of people saying verbally, they are out for the best interest of this city and everything, but then their actions are saying the total opposite. They're dragging the city into mud and through mud. People have to either start saying what they actually feel or they need to knock it off and just stop it. I'm tired of the two sides of the mouth. Your words speak as loud as your actions. Your actions speak as loud as your words. They need to coincide. And people are not coinciding their actions with their words. You know, if Mr. Solomon wants to sue and everything, you know, that's his personal right. And you know what? That's not what we're going to discuss at this council meeting. That's not our fight right now. We are here to decide if we feel we need to set a hearing. I just voiced my opinion and I made a motion. I'm tired of people just saying one thing and their actions saying another. Because everyone keeps saying they're doing this for the best interest of Tracy. Well, the best interest of Tracy is stop it. All of it, stop it.
And I agree with that. And had it been properly handled in the first place, this would never have come up. That issue should never have left that administrator's office.
But Tony, that's.
I'm just saying what I mean, and I mean what I say.
Okay.
You've got the motion on the floor, vote on it.
Yeah. Is there any other comment, questions? We have a first and a second, we'll go to vote.
Teigs?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Motion to not set a hearing date, passes. Resolutions we've taken care of, consent calendar. Motion to approve the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage for Sanford Health and for the municipal accounts receivable. First and second, discussion? Go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Wait, I shouldn't have had you, I shouldn't have put Sanford in that one, sorry.
No, because I just won't vote on this, I'll abstain from this one.
Yep.
And then you'll abstain from the other one.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Without breakthrough beverage in Sanford. And what was the other one you had on there? Accounts receivable, that passes. Now we do with breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to approve the accounts, or consent calendar with breakthrough beverage.
First and second, questions? Go to vote.
For breakthrough, right?
Yep.
For breakthrough.
All right. Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with Sanford Health.
I'll second that. Questions? Go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes. Unfinished business, the census liaison. Have we got any more on that, or?
Liaison, we have two possible interests in it.
Okay.
But they're not, they're not really nailed down exactly if they absolutely want to do it or not. That's kind of where we're at right now. I don't know if council has heard anybody that they want to hear have that position.
Have not. And you guys, no?
I don't have any time.
So we can keep advertising for it.
Do you want, what, three to four? Four to five, or something like that?
Yeah.
When do we have to have this?
By January, wasn't it?
I would say, I'm sure you can get it by November.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
All right, and did we get any response to the carousel, or, it's on there?
Just one.
Just one.
One of the two.
Well, I don't know, what do you think? We run it another two weeks and look at it again next meeting? Table it?
Just keep it on the unfinished business.
Okay. Administrator hiring update.
We still need to grade some of the candidates, determine the finalists. Due to the fact that there's still some that need to be graded and they do need to, we need to reveal the finalists in a open meeting. We do have Friday set right now for interviews. I was, I guess I would recommend using Friday to set the finalists possibly instead of interviewing and then see if we can interview the following week. Or I guess that's just a recommendation that I have. Do you guys have any ideas on that?
I will be around this Friday.
You're talking about special council mayor on the 27th, just as.
Yeah, because we have to set right now for interviews starting at 6:15. Instead of doing interviews, I was wondering if we have that date on the calendar, do we want to use it to set who the finalists will be and then interview after that?
And we're just going off the gradings as to who the finalists are going to be?
Yeah.
Like I said, I won't be in town, but I would have, I would have my grades done. So if we're just going to do it based off that.
Is there going to be any discussion? I mean, are we going to review the grades and then discuss, or just?
Are you just going to take the top three and study?
I would suggest you take the top three, that's the simplest and it's worked well in the past.
I'm just looking at the league's guidelines, which is linked to Minnesota statute, that they have to reveal the top candidates in an open meeting. So that's just, yeah, I can get the grades, but you know, have the top finalists based on the scoring. But I just won't have the open meeting to reveal them in, so.
How many days do we have to advertise a meeting?
Three days in advance for a special meeting.
So if we set it now, that would give us the time.
And when do you want to do interviews?
I think we have to set a date and stick to it. You know, some of these candidates, we've jerked them around.
Yeah, they've been waiting and.
Yep. No, it's just when are we, when do.
Yep, no, it's just when are we, when do we want to do them next, the next week? Do we want to do it like the second, the third, just depending upon their schedules? Try to do it all on like the, does the night of the second work? I know it's a Wednesday night, but does that work?
The only day that doesn't work for me is Thursday, but Friday.
Or do we do it Tuesday?
Tuesday, that's not real well for me.
We can set it for Wednesday the second, start at like, what, 6 o'clock or 6:30?
We're not talking doing an open house, we're just, we're going to just do.
Us interviewing them. And do it all like 45 minutes or so, do it like an hour apart type thing?
Does that give the candidates enough time? Because they won't be called till.
Friday, Friday night. Friday, we're having the meeting Friday.
What time would the meeting be on Friday?
Earlier the better for me.
Well, and even for, to get to the candidates, you don't want to, I mean, on a Friday night, be trying to get a hold of them at 9 o'clock at night or something.
Right.
Well, we were planning on the open house at 4, so we probably should have, I mean, I guess I had my schedule blocked at work thinking I was going to be doing the open house and that, so do we say 4 o'clock, does that work for, or 5? 5 for people at, with work, I don't know.
This Friday, we're talking.
This Friday?
For the meeting.
This Friday's not a problem.
What works for you guys for work?
I can, I can get time off if I need to, I just, you know, it's going to be a short deal, right?
It's not going to take us.
If we did it first thing in the morning at like 8 or 9 a.m., can we do it that way? Then I can just go into work late.
I'm in the cities this Friday.
Like you said, you'll have your grading done.
I'll have my grading done, so it's just a matter of you four going, these are the top three off we go, thank you, and then you'd have Friday to call them.
7?
You could do it at 6:45 like an EDA, you don't bother me, you can't help anyway.
That's fine too.
No, no.
7 o'clock is fine.
Be two in a week.
I was thinking 8 o'clock, but what time do you have to get to work?
8 o'clock should work for me too.
I don't care.
Yeah, I, I'm supposed to be at work at 8 o'clock, but I can slide it to 9. All right, so 4:32.
So at 8 a.m. on the 27th.
And then we're still going to go for the interviews on, first interview at 6 o'clock on the second? Or do we want to push it off till?
Does Wednesday the second work for everybody?
It works for me.
You talking about during the day or the evening?
No, nighttime, I think.
The only day I really have open that week is Monday or Friday.
Monday would be too soon for interviews.
I think so too. Can we bump it to Friday? Does that kill every, anybody?
Do you want to start at 5 and do 5, 6, and 7?
Good to me.
Do the person that lives farthest away at 5.
Sure.
Go backwards that route.
Okay. We need a motion to set that stuff, or are we just informational?
Would anyone need a motion?
I don't think so, but I want to make sure we're going to be covered.
So 8 a.m. on the 27th? 5.
5, 6, 7 on the 4th.
Got it?
And I would say call the one that lives furthest away, see if they can make it early, maybe the early time doesn't work for them because they.
Further away.
Yeah, but give the one furthest away the choice.
So, then I'm going to ask the question, if, depending on how the scoring comes out, if the individual is at a distance, are we good with a telephone interview?
We've done it before, last thing we.
If they can't make it, then you offer them that, yeah.
We did one last thing.
I just wanted, but I want it out there so that we thought about it.
Yep.
We're good with that? All right. Okay, any questions or further discussion on that topic? All right, moving on to curbside recycling update.
I did, per request at the last meeting, I did send a letter via email to all the county commissioners on the council's feelings on the curbside pickup, and different options that you had to offer with that, and they, they did kind of table a whole discontinuance. Right now, they're going to be setting a hearing on September 30th at 6:30 on the county, and I think the 27th is the cutoff. They sent out another RFP for, for curbside pickup again, and then they're looking at different options. I know two commissioners reached out to me after I sent the email out, kind of said they're looking into it, but that's where that's at right now, so.
And the 30th was like a public hearing too, isn't it?
Yep, it's a public hearing, looks like Monday, September 30th.
Okay.
But nothing changes as far as recycling goes now.
Right now, they will, they may have a gap in services, because they're going to end here real shortly.
They're still going to end on the 27th?
Yeah, I believe so. But they, there may be, you know, a week or two gap, and then hopefully continue on again, so that's kind of what I got out of the commissioners, but just have to let it play through the process.
All right. Stay tuned. Okay, new business, liquor store and airport numbers from Boxcar Days.
Well, she had the number.
Well, she said it in her report.
Liquor store was 1,200.
1,200, yep.
That's gross, wasn't it?
Yep.
Do we know what the airport?
Banning, or banning, fun counting, they won't let me in there today because they're fixing another upgrade. But it's roughly $2,300 after expenses we brought into the airport this year, which is up a little bit from last year, we didn't have to pay for the squadron because they couldn't fly. We didn't have any flyovers, I think it finally cleared up about 10:30 that morning, so I would like to thank everybody that helped with that too.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Mayor and Council Communications, anybody got anything? All right, at this time, we will.
Motion to close the regular portion of the meeting.
Is there a second?
Adjourn the regular portion of the meeting.
No, we can't adjourn until after, right? So we close the regular portion, open the closed portion, then close the.
That's right, I had it right.
Yes. So, we will at this time, close the open meeting, and we will open the closed meeting. Thank you all for coming.